Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the June 18th Town of Culpeper Planning Commission. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clements?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Siriio?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Mr. Flanagan?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations.
You have four. You have minutes.
Ah, well, let's approve the minutes.
Yep. I'll move to approve the minute.
Is there a second?
The minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not scheduled for a public hearing. That is only the first item, which is the Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review.
But that's not a public hearing.
No, it's not. But they could speak about that if they'd like. Anybody would like to come and speak about the conformity review?
Under item seven, it is a public hearing for that.
It's not a public hearing for that?
That's the Vision Zero.
Oh, okay. All right, gotcha.
Ms. Parmally?
All right, I'll get the ball rolling. I'm Sarah Parmally, representing the Pinmont Environmental Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak since there is no public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review. The makeup of the Planning Commission has changed significantly since Copper Ridge was forwarded to the town council without a recommendation. What has not changed is the Comprehensive Plan, which does not support the placement of substations and transmission lines adjacent to key historic resources and people's homes. You will have read in the many ways in which the Comprehensive Plan does not support the proposed substations and transmission lines in the many excellent comments you received from citizens affected by this issue. Yes, the Comprehensive Plan supports economic growth, but that growth should not come at the expense of existing residents, businesses, and irreplaceable historic resources. It may be easy to believe that a substation buffered by a double row of trees will not affect homes or detract from the rural historic character of Culpeper. However, the proposed substations are huge, each at least five times larger than the existing substations in Culpeper, and their equipment can be 50 feet or taller, which will be highly visible, especially when the buffers are young. Moreover, the transmission line needed to serve the 16 data center buildings included in these campuses will not be screenable by any trees, given that it will be at least 120 feet, but possibly up to 170 feet tall. This line is also likely to interfere with the enhanced landscape buffers that have been proffered, because a line this size is unlikely to fit within the narrow gap between the Culpeper Technology Campus and Copper Ridge, an issue that was brought up during the rezoning of Copper Ridge and has yet to be addressed. All these utilities are not needed to serve the town of Culpeper. They are needed for two highly speculative projects, the end users of which are completely unknown. The data center industry is changing rapidly, and even those within the industry admit that these facilities could be rendered obsolete in as little as a decade, especially if we see a breakthrough in quantum computing or fail to see the widespread adoption of AI. Is it worth sacrificing our history and the work of those who have painstakingly built a life in Culpeper for an unknown entity that may never exist? We respectfully ask the Planning Commission to honor the Comprehensive Plan as it expresses the will of the community and find these substations and their associated transmission lines not in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Please approach the podium and state your name and residence.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Andrew Dowdy. I live at 602 South Blue Ridge Avenue. And I appreciate the chance to make a few points about this conformity review. First of all, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting. This is not a zoning question. This is not a question for you to decide whether this is a good development or bad development for Culpeper. Virginia Code 15.2232 is asking you for a finding. And the finding is simply whether the proposed electrical connections are in accord with the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. And whatever you find in here is also relevant to another section of Virginia Code. That's 56265-2, which relates to, determines the process by which a public utility gets approval for its power lines, its certificate of public necessity and convenience. Today, based on the information you had, if you had to render a finding based on the information you had today, I think it would be difficult to conclude that the proposals are in conformance. And the Comprehensive Plan looked at the specific tracks. I think it's on page 68 of the Comprehensive Plan. They recommended a mixed-use development and provided five pages of guidelines for what that mixed-use development, any mixed-use development should look like. The data centers appear to meet none of those. On the other hand, I don't believe you've been given enough information to make this determination, the information that's required under the code. We don't know the proposed line voltage. We don't know the location of the transmission lines. We don't know the height of the transmission towers. If they're 230 kilovolt, you could expect 175 or 200 feet high. Furthermore, although Copper Ridge has provided the location of its substations, it's providing no detail. They would be huge at Copper Ridge. They're proposing 10 acres of substations, which would be six times the size of the Culpeper, the substation providing power to the town. There could also be a huge, an ISO in addition to this enormous substation sitting, this is in the hayfield on the south side of the annex, the cemetery annex. Sitting in that hayfield, they could provide a huge ISO and also a source of noise or electromagnetic field. I would also note, I went to the low-income apartment site at Lightfoot Street today. They will be sitting right across the railroad from the 60 low-income apartments you approved at your last meeting, without buffer, according to the proffer. There will be no buffer. And those low-income apartments will be looking right across the railroad into that substation. Also possible, the daycare center.
Mr. Dowdy, that is your time, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Is that your role or the chair's role?
Chair's role is for three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
The chair.
Thank you.
We have a full room.
Chair, the chair asked me to track the time.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Brent Amos. I live at 801 Southeast Street, right down the street. So you guys are asked to find whether this development, specifically the substation and the transmission lines, are in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. In the Comprehensive Plan, there's a lot of great detail, a lot of great effort by our community. Not once is there a single mention of the transmission lines, nor is there a mention of any substations. Virginia Code clearly indicates that in 15.2.223, the designation of corridors or routes for electrical transmission lines of 150 kilovolts or more should be indicated in the Comprehensive Plan. No such mention. There's existing transmission lines, but if there's any planned upgrades to those transmission lines, it would need to be in that Comprehensive Plan, which it was not. Regardless of that, the approved zoning for that facility was mixed-use development. There are no mixed-use developments that need a 10-acre substation. How can that be in conformance with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan? The Comprehensive Plan speaks of creating community, driving economic development, and creating a place for residents to live and thrive. Neither of those developments speak to that in any way. Kids can't go and play and experience a high-voltage line. It creates a dangerous thing. The screening, as Mr. Dowdy pointed out, is inadequate. The units are 30 feet above the screening elements along the railroad tracks. Everyone along Southeast Street is going to be able to see it. Everybody in the neighborhood is going to be able to hear the loud hums of those elements. A more, well, a more appropriate solution, if you find that this is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, is to locate the substation as far away from the residents as possible. It should be located on McDevitt. McDevitt has now been designated as a technology corridor. As such, all of the utilities should be on McDevitt and not facing the streets and the neighborhoods of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, Steve Walker, address 701 Southeast Street. I just, Kathy and I sent you a letter, and I guess, I see them on the desk, so I guess you all received them. I hope you find them helpful in looking at how to make this project, if it's going to go forward, maybe a better thing for the community. And the voltage on the transmission lines, which I know Mr. Flanagan is aware of, towers and things that the transmission lines require, but as part of the gateway, I think the Comprehensive Plan would give you the authority to require it to be buried underground, so that the towers, if they end up being very large towers, which I'm sure they're going to be, they would be more attractive or less of a problem if they're buried underground. And I just want to say that, please remember the future well-being of the town of Culpeper citizens, not just now, but in the future. So keep that in mind as you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Jessica Amos, and I live at 801 Southeast Street in the National Historic District, adjacent to Copper Ridge Development. We back right up to the proposed substation. I'm a Historic Preservation Specialist with a background in city planning and architecture, and I oversee the Georgetown Historic District under the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts. I submit a rather lengthy comments on how the substation transmission lines do not conform with the town's comp plan. In short, comp plan is a 146-page document that in every way does not support the assumed transmission lines. And just because this is a necessary component of the data center does not mean you need to blindly approve the transmission lines. I have wanted to avoid bringing anything but the law into my comments, but today I want to make, take a moment to talk about the real-world impacts this will have on not just my family and me, but the neighbors and fellow citizens. This will be visible and heard all across town, including Blue Ridge. When we bought our house in 2020, my husband and I did our due diligence and researched the land behind us. At that time, it was approved for residential development, while the farmland is obviously more desirable. Considering the advantageous location near downtown, a residential development or even mixed-use development, as it was earmarked on the comp plan, made sense, and we could support this. There's no mention of enlarging transmission lines, data centers, or substations, and we felt safe in our investment and bought our first house. We have loved our home and the community we have found in Culpeper, and we planned to raise our family here. We've invested money and sweat equity in the process and have invested in the community. Our parents had intentions of moving here from Memphis and New Orleans. However, they have paused their home search for fear of the data center situation, and we have paused our future plans in Culpeper because of the situation. East Street residents were not made aware of any of the meetings going on last year regarding this topic. I should note that my husband Brent, who just spoke, designs science and tech buildings worldwide. When he and I found out about the approval, we were immediately concerned, and we involved his colleague, who specifically designs and builds data centers. And his response to the minimal information provided was, if I were you, I'd sell my house now. For the last eight months, we've been faced with, do we sell our beloved home now, or wait until construction begins and our property values plummets? With both the known and unknown negative impacts of transmission lines, substations, and data centers on health and quality of life, as well as the intense construction and infrastructural overhaul required, most would not want to buy our house at that point. Besides the personal financial toll, we must also consider the financial toll on Culpeper citizens. The fees for the transmission lines will be passed on to the townspeople. This is hard for me to swallow. We will pay more money for something that will bring us harm. And no economic studies have been completed. Money is good, but not at any cost. Please do not sell Culpeper short. We're looking at great public loss for private gain. While it stands to have a major impact on us personally, it's not just about us. It's about the future of Culpeper. This development, these transmission lines, will be seen and heard all over town, even from Blue Ridge. Keep in mind, this industry offers so much money because they understand the negative impacts that come with.
Ms. Amos, that is your time.
Okay. Do the right thing here. Bring more allegations in my Virginia Code, please. Thanks.
Who else would like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Kutowski. I live at 1130 Oaklawn Drive. I currently serve as Chair of the Architectural Review Board of Town of Culpeper. I am also Vice Chair of the Museum of Culpeper History, and I work with, on the new Civil War State Park. So I'm very familiar with tourism and historic heritage. My family has lived in Culpeper for over 100 years. I was going to support some of the things that have been said, but I want to take a different viewpoint. I was very lucky to work most of my life as a real estate developer. I know quite a bit about the data center industry, about land, land development, and I can tell you one thing, the developers need this town much more than the town needed developers. The data center industry is scrambling for land all over Virginia. They're desperate for sites. I spent 20 years of my career before boards like this convincing them that they had to convince, do my projects, because otherwise I would walk away. That is not the case. You have the power to move the transmission lines and the substations where you want them, and the developer will have no choice but to do it because they're desperate for the land. I urge you to find that the current site is not in conformance with the council plan and have the developers move the transmission lines and the, and the power to a different location. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Charlotte Cole. I live at 1210 South Blue Ridge Avenue. I'm here to speak during this forum because no public hearing was provided to us. My comments address the proposed data center project and the associated substations, which I believe do not comply with the town's 2018 Comprehensive Plan. I concur with the reasons given by my colleagues before me, but inciting the noncompliance, but I just want to add a few more things that are more from the human side of this situation. And I'm quoting from some, from a five-year study by Steven Monserat from MIT called "The Staggering Ecological Impacts of Computation in the Cloud." The data centers admit an incredible amount of acoustic waste, and that's been touched on before. The acute and longitudinal psychological effects are well documented, to include hearing loss, elevated stress hormones associated with hypertension and insomnia. You only have to hear Fox 5 reporter Katie Barlow's report from August 2022 in Manassas to understand the terrible negative acoustic waste effect on citizens there. We're hoping that you won't move to bring those same problems here. Moreover, every action on your digital device provides an entry point into the theoretical realm called the cloud. We all know what that is, and we all know the infrastructure that's required to support it. What we don't think about often is the insatiable flow of electricity, water, air, metals, minerals, and rare earth elements. So in truth, the cloud is a behemoth negative ecological force. Heat is the byproduct of the cloud, and it relentlessly needs to be abated, because it runs 24 hours a day, every day of the year, every year, for decades. Among the many concerns for Copper, that Copper Ridge invites is what data center technicians call a thermal runaway event. That's a cascading failure of cooling systems that erupts the functioning of the servers, the process that stores and facilitates everything that we do online. To quell the thermodynamic threat, data centers rely on air conditioning, and in North America, most data centers draw their power from dirty electricity grids, including here in Virginia, the site of 70% of the world's internet traffic. And most data centers' cooling alone accounts for 40% of electricity use. So the cloud now has a greater carbon footprint than the world's entire airline industry. That makes me afraid. The single data center, one single data center can consume the equivalent electricity of 50,000 homes. 16 data centers are proposed for Copper Ridge and the Culpeper Technology Center. When you do the math, the power requirement for those proposed servers is that of 800,000 homes. Finally, data centers are very thirsty. Some politicians now openly are opposing the construction of data centers, framing their water usage as irresponsible and inessential, given resource constraints. Our forefathers here in Culpeper.
Ms. Cole, I'm afraid that's your time.
We're brilliant. That's all I'll say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I know we have another.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Kaiser. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you. I appreciate it. There was no formal public hearing, so that's why I'm here. My comments are short and hopefully sweet. I just want to reiterate what my friends and my neighbors have already said. They've said so many important things. I feel like maybe you haven't looked at the negative impacts too much of what this all means to us as citizens. I live on Chandler and Southeast Street, so it does impact me and my husband and our neighbors. And I just want to say, I do so hope that you will see the noncompliance with the Comprehensive Plan. It is an important plan, and I'll be anxious to see how you handle this. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Does somebody else like to address us?
Good evening. I'm Michael Boudet. My wife and I live at 810 Southeast Street. We're relatively new to Culpeper. We moved just seven months ago into the neighborhood. And I certainly echo a lot of the concerns that have just been articulated. And I would just add, as again, a newcomer coming to the community, the thing that attracted us most about Culpeper, coming from Northern Virginia, was again, the historical heritage and the sense balanced with modern charm and the careful growth and the way the town seems to have been balancing this so very well. And to learn that the Comprehensive Plan has, you know, stated its goal to preserve and enhance that which already exists is very important. That's why we came here and moved in the first place. But we certainly are concerned that the citizens be heard. Also, a little concerned about the process. It's good that we're being heard tonight, but I hope it really does take good measure with your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I could change it up. Next? Anyone else like to take the opportunity to speak? I, for one, am very pleased to see a full room. I wish you would have been here for the rezoning.
So do we.
Yes. Mr. Hopewell, can we move on with the introduction of the Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review?
Yes, sir. It's at the discretion of the commission. I have the presentation that was provided at the last regular meeting. We can run through that again. There have been no changes to it. There's no new information for consideration. But if you'd like me to present it again, I'm happy to do so.
I think we ought to do that for the people who've bothered to come and visit us today.
Certainly.
I'd like to see it again.
Yes.
So, as we call it, a 2232 review stems from Virginia State Code, Section 15.22232, which requires features such as public service corporation facilities to, if they are not specifically designated within the Comprehensive Plan, be found to conform to that plan by the locality's planning commission. So that's what you're being asked to do today, is to evaluate the location, the character and extent of these facilities against the locality's Comprehensive Plan. To reiterate, these properties are located within the town's adopted technology zone. This was adopted in December of 2022. You can see where the proposed substations are. They're grouped adjacent to one another on the two properties. They were included within the rezoning packets that went through and were considered by both the Planning Commission and Town Council. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the, recommended approval of the Culpeper Technology Campus rezoning, and did not provide a recommendation on the Copper Ridge application. Ultimately, Town Council did approve both of these rezoning applications. Part of that rezoning analysis included their evaluation of these projects against the Comprehensive Plan, and that serves as a primary guiding document in their evaluations and the ultimate determination. So it was not specifically polled, but that is the document that is primarily used to evaluate the rezonings that went through the application process. So at this time, the locality does not have formal jurisdiction over the location of the transmission lines. Because these lines are anticipated to exceed 138 kilovolts, they come, fall under the purview of the State Corporation Commission to ascertain the location. The locality does not have the ability to block or prohibit those lines. We are working closely with the developers of both of these projects to ensure that the lines are running through the center of the two facilities to minimize the visual impact of these lines and forming essentially the shortest route to the proposed substation locations. So at this time, when you looked at the Comprehensive Plan for the rezonings, which these facilities are inherently necessary to support those rezonings, there was language which supported the rezonings with relation to the future land uses designation of employment center for these and economic development section related to business attraction. As noted within the public comments section this evening, the Comprehensive Plan's character area description of mixed-use business certainly was not in confor, it wasn't, this proposed use was not in conformance with that portion. Though there was language in there which related to economic viability, which did support it by encouraging new site development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Ultimately, you are tasked with determining the appropriateness of these facilities within the context of the town's Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Hopewell, could you tell, would it be appropriate to bring into light the rejection of the substation site by the County of Culpeper on McDevitt for the Patterson project?
With the rezoning of that particular property, the Culpeper County did essentially require or prohibit that site at the corner of McDevitt and East Chandler from being utilized as a substation. It had initially been contemplated to be utilized in that fashion, but Culpeper County, as they went through the rezoning process, worked with the applicant for them to proffer out that as a potential use, because the county opposed the, that particular location for utilization for a substation facility.
And it's a small sliver of that land that belongs to the county, right?
If we actually look at the bottom right-hand corner, that's the Culpeper Technology Campus, the complete area showing both the town portion and the county portion. As you can see in the top right corner, when it came through the town rezoning process, it was contemplated as for potential use as either a facility or a substation. But when they went through the county for the rezoning process there to zone it appropriately for these potential uses, the county was not comfortable with it as a potential substation.
Planning Commission?
The County Board of Supervisors. I don't, I don't know the position of the county's Planning Commission, but the ultimate action by the Board of Supervisors was upon an application in which the applicant, I believe at the request of the county, had proffered out the potential use of that site as a substation location.
Supervisors didn't take any advice from the advisory board, the planning advisory board?
I can't, I, I'm not familiar enough to.
I know they didn't, because I'm on the board and we never had a meeting.
That's the joint.
The joint.
The joint one, correct. But that did go through their Planning Commission, who provided a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, it did go to the Planning Commission.
It went to their planning, yes.
Okay. That's a shame, because that's the perfect place for it.
So that would have eliminated the, whatever voltage corridor along McDevitt Drive that had been suggested earlier this evening. That corridor's been eliminated. There's no way to move it there.
As far as a substation. As far as a substation location, it would not be able to be located there.
Why not?
Captain's County approval.
Oh, that's, okay. I thought you meant physically. There's no way. It can be moved there if the county changes their mind.
And what were the key, the key elements of the county's decision based on?
Land use.
Yeah. Because it didn't conform with the county comprehensive plan or?
Again, I'm not comfortable speaking for what the rationale of the County Board of Supervisors was in making that determination. But ultimately, in their negotiations and conversations with the applicant, it was proffered out as a potential location for a substation facility.
If we wanted to, could we request Representative of the county government to come speak to this body and explain their motivation or their analysis?
We could request it, but as it relates to this 2232 review, if the planning commission does not take action tonight, it is approved due to the time constraints.
I have a question about that.
Yeah, I do too, but.
What makes you say that?
There's a 60-day time limit for the planning commission to act. It was introduced to the planning commission at their work session in April. This is 53 days from that time.
Introduced to us in April or May?
It was introduced in April. We held the first, we held a request for action on it in May. At that time, the planning commission chose not to act and requested legal opinion as to whether there was a necessity to act. That legal opinion came back, but yes, it was appropriate for the planning commission to act on this item.
Have we discussed previous to this, the 60-day deadline?
We had not. Again, this was anticipated to be addressed by the planning commission at the meeting in May.
But there was, I mean, yeah, I'm surprised that, you know, I feel like we have a gun to our head now. And it's one thing to have a gun to your head when you told your gun to have a gun to your head. But it's an unpleasant surprise when it just happens.
So it was May. What are the number of days? Did you say 15?
This was introduced at the April work session to the planning commission.
I don't remember that at all. April. I remember it in May, and we voted on it in May. They postponed it. I don't remember being, see, the rezoning, yes, but not the compliance with the comprehensive plan wasn't presented in April. I don't remember it unless we have the minutes to show that.
John, they're in the minutes. They're in your packet today.
I remember.
That meeting minutes are right here. Yeah, we just approved those minutes.
Okay.
It was news to me too, but we did it. Yeah.
I remember, I remember the introduction, but I just, I'm baffled why at the time of introduction, no, no statement. The department would not have said, we have 60 days to act on this or it's approved by default. I find that a little, I'm not sure that conforms with good faith interaction.
And I apologize again. I did not think we'd be running up against the timeline.
It's common practice. It happened in Orange County. Same 60-day deadline.
We've had other things like that happen, yeah, here.
It's commonplace.
Can you name one that we've, that's come before us?
I said, the 60-day is also, policy is also mirrored in Orange County.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I would think notification or transparency would be apropos, would be apposite.
Nice.
So I still have one other question. Who exactly brought this to us in April?
I did.
I remember.
Right. So you're the applicant?
I'm the applicant, essentially, yes.
Okay. All right. Just so we're clear. Because I haven't heard anything from the actual developer or from anyone else.
Correct. I initiated this process essentially on behalf of those property owners because we are at the stage now of looking at site plans and having the facilities shown and depicted on these site plans. And so essentially, in an ideal world, we would have done this in conjunction with the rezonings and taken care of it and addressed it at that time in one fell swoop. But recognizing that we had not specifically addressed these facilities and these sites and their conformity with the comprehensive plan, and wanting to ensure that we essentially had done everything by the book in the appropriate manner, I initiated this and brought it to the planning commission for your evaluation of the appropriateness of these facilities.
You don't remember is I think you got on the board the meeting after this was discussed.
Yeah, I was saying on my way in, yeah, I spent, I did seven hours of meeting television this afternoon catching myself up. I mean, this, there was quite, I mean, obviously, two very lengthy public hearings. This level, another public hearing at the council level. All that, you know, with a picture that included a substation on it. But really what you're saying in terms of an ultimate timeline today is, if we don't think this thing is ready for prime time, we have no choice but to deny it. Because we can't, right, so, because there is no pushback.
We can't postpone it, yeah.
Right, right. So if we deny it, then council can hear that appeal.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, you know, that won't change the rezoning. Whether we deny it or approve it, it doesn't make any difference. It's not going to change the zoning change. Council made a decision on zoning change.
Correct.
We just want to tell them whether it's in compliance or not.
Right.
This adjustment to the original, the plan that accompanied the rezoning application is confirmed.
No, it was a separate object, right? It was either this in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the rezoning. Either one can be done independently.
They can be done independently. Where we run into problems is that the substations would not be able to be constructed without the finding of conformity with the comprehensive plan by the planning commission.
Okay.
Or doing nothing.
Or doing nothing, which would essentially be an approval and a de facto finding.
Well, also, we're going to see the site plan too, right?
Correct.
And at that point, we can tell the architect, hey, this need, the-
No, sir.
The substation should be somewhere else.
No, sir. Because you approved the, or town council approved the conceptual development plan showing the location of the substations.
Okay, okay.
So there's a commitment to substantial conformance with those plans. So there-
And you can't fight the National Electric Safety Code, which would dictate the height of the towers.
Now, also, that's something, buried cables are much better, especially with that kind of voltage, I think. And you should think too. You're the expert.
Distribution.
I have two questions.
You go down Route 3, you know, they have those power cables coming in for telemark. And there's other power cables that go underneath it. I don't know if it's town or what. But right where those cables cross, ones that are buried. And then they come back up again. Why? Because it's crosstalk.
No, it's because the only way I could get Neesmit to get it across that transmission line.
Why did they want to bury one then? It's expensive.
It's the only way VDOT would let me do it.
Because there's crosstalk.
The only way VDOT would let me do it. VDOT would not let me put it on the poles, right next to the Daniel Technology Center.
Okay. And by the way, it's-
Now, if we could get back to-
Those transmission lines are not loud at all. I parked underneath them and there's no sound at all.
Put a light bulb in your mouth.
Yeah, I would imagine you would glow. I don't doubt that. But there's no noise.
Mr. Searle, we are now seriously down a rabbit hole. If we could get back to-
Okay, sure. I understand.
Ms. Schmidt, you're our new representative from the town council. I'm really interested in your thoughts, if you have any.
Well, you know, I wish we had done all this initially. You know, your back's kind of against the wall now. And I know that some of the things that have been represented today are not accurate as far as the height of the transmission lines and the amount of voltage that's going to probably be coming in. That's going to be up to the power supplier. But, you know, we're not talking about huge towers here, I don't think. And you wonder if I ask, I've been in the electric utility industry for about 40 years. So.
Sorry?
I've been in the electric utility industry for about 40 years.
You have?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so happy to hear that. I didn't realize we had that wealth of expertise added to the board with your-
So I've checked this out as well. So, out of concern for the town.
Yeah. No, it makes it stronger. I'm really happy to hear that.
Yep. So I'm comfortable with what has been proposed. And again, it's going to be up to Dominion, Virginia, or whomever.
Up to Dominion?
Yes.
Even I do not know if it's going to be powered, if the station's going to be powered 230 or 115.
Right. I'm thinking 230.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, what is, in which statute does the 60-day limit appear?
It's in the 2232.
2232. Is it part of, is it part of this, the executive summary?
It's VA Code 15.2-2232, paragraph B.
B.
Right, that's not a complete citation though, right? It ends mid-sentence.
Correct. You want me to read it? I got it right here.
I can look it up myself.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to see it through.
Yeah.
Read the whole thing. In the case of a denial, I've got the code right here. I have all the sample. In the event of a denial, is the applicant, or I guess you're the applicant in this case, are you able to bring the action before this body again in the future?
I am the applicant, but it would be the owners of the property are able to appeal that to town council.
Okay.
So this is the thing that's confusing to me about that paragraph B. We're just supposed to communicate our findings to the governing body, including approval and disapproval, with written reason. And then the governing body can do whatever they want. So we could actually approve it. It still goes to council. Council could still overrule us.
If they wanted to take an action, the default is that they take no action and accept the planning commission's position. But they do have the authority. They don't have to affirm the planning commission's action for it to be finalized.
Right.
Isn't it true that we're the ones responsible for the comprehensive plan, the planning commission? So we're the best one to give a determination on whether it's a part of it or not.
Correct. As I said, that's why-
That's why it's here.
Correct. And that's why it's assumed that this action is final. However, if it is appealed, or if the town council wishes to amend the decision, they have the ability to do so.
Yeah, they're the boss.
And just for record, can you explain again why the county attorney does not believe that the clock on this started last summer?
The town attorney?
Yeah. So, I mean, I asked, I've asked in previous meetings for an opinion from the town attorney of why we are actually even being asked to look at this, when through that entire process, a map with the substation proper on it, you know, in a project, a rezoning contingent on following this picture, somehow that didn't start the clock.
Because we didn't ask the specific question, is the short answer, in terms of making the finding of these particular facilities. And again, I apologize, that was my oversight. I was focused on the data centers themselves and not the public service corporation facilities that would be necessary to support it, even though they were depicted on that conceptual development plan.
Now, in fairness, the comprehensive plan is a living document. It is not rare that the tail wags the dog. That mixed-use, the mixed-use that's in the comp plan now is probably there as a result of Copper Ridge 490-unit housing development being approved in the first place.
I certainly would imagine that weighed in when they came up with that designation for the land use there.
Right. So there's no, I mean, that obviously was a farm at one point, right? So these changes, so, I mean, I just want to be clear that this is a very complicated issue, obviously. And in terms of, you know, it's chicken and egg in some circumstances, we are definitely chasing, right? I mean, some, and a project has been, a rezoning has been approved, and now we're being asked to sort of make it fit, or asked if it fits.
Correct.
Right. So I did, one other question. Again, so I have a lot of experience, recent experience with the presentation that the developer, the applicant, you know, presented to council. Directly below, in this image on the screen, directly below, the area directly in white, directly below where that substation pad is located, he seemed to indicate that there's another substation, there was another substation on that piece of property? He's, I mean, there was talk of clustering with the neighbor?
The clustering was between Copper Ridge and Culpeper Technology Campus.
All right. So when, but, all right.
So essentially, what they've done is clustered them in terms of the location across the property line from one another.
So there is, so in the white section below this pad, there is another substation?
No.
Okay.
No. What was intended was essentially the, as you can see, the substation for the Culpeper Technology Campus is shown on the left-hand side in that top-left corner of that particular one.
Gray area.
Which aligns then with the Copper Ridge, which is the colored schematic there, with their gray area substation on the left-hand side of it.
So the black and white picture on the bottom right is the technology?
Is Culpeper Technology Campus.
And their substation is essentially the west, northwest corner.
Correct.
Directly across from where this will go.
Where the Copper Ridge substation is proposed.
So whether we like this one or not, Copper Ridge, the view shed is still going to be the technology center's substation.
Yes, the two substations are sitting immediately adjacent to one another.
This is-
Just whether they're bigger or not.
This is assuming the change is approved, right?
Well, from the approved conceptual plans for both projects have the substations sitting adjacent to one another.
They say we're going to run the transmission line down between them to basically share the pain.
The change that we're being asked to-
How's it going to come in?
There's no change.
It's supposed to come down McDevitt.
Is it going to come in McDevitt?
Why is an action required?
You don't know. Because the other option is not a joint to a train.
These substation facilities in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
McDevitt's a perfect place to go, yes.
John, I have another question. So because, and I apologize, and I appreciate everyone's patience with me and with being new on the board here. Did this technology campus have, did the planning commission have to, you know, weigh in on the comp plan sort of conformity for the, for that substation?
This is for both projects. This review currently is for both substation facilities on the two projects.
I would explain why they're both on the slide.
Correct.
And so we're not talking about one substation, we're talking about two.
Correct.
And this has just come to light now.
And it will support how many data centers?
16.
Well, the two campuses.
It's not 16. It's less than that, isn't it?
It's the two campuses.
Which is?
Copper Ridge was proposed for six buildings. Culpeper Technology Campus was proposed for eight buildings.
14.
So it's a 14.
Mr. Chairman, when we spoke last week, you were going to ask this, the department could give a before-and-after presentation of the application.
I did.
Is there?
As I said, there is no change to the application.
So what is the significance of the county's determination?
I believe that Mr. Flanagan had raised it to illustrate that the location of the substation on that portion of land at the corner of McDevitt and East Chandler was not an option because of the county's action.
And can you just repeat what the county's action was?
The applicant rezoned that property with the county to an industrial designation that would allow data center uses on that property. As they went through that process, they had negotiations with the, the county and the applicant had negotiations on conditions related to that rezoning. And one of the conditions that was agreed upon by the applicant was that a transmission facility would not be located at that site.
It's the need for the substation.
They had always contemplated the substation.
But this one will do double duty.
Well, there was the potential that it could have been located in a different location. They were looking to retain that flexibility. But essentially, the county precluded them from locating it at that corner through that rezoning process.
This is Plan B.
Well, that's not what he's saying, though. He's saying this could have been planned. It's like Schrodinger's cat. It could have been- like Schrodinger's count, it could have been Plan A or could have been Plan B.
The, the approval with the town on the rezoning showing or depicting that substation at the rear preceded the action with the county, but the county would have granted additional flexibility had it been permitted.
The omission in the original rezoning application was stating that this would, would definitely be the location of the substation for this campus, is that correct?
The omission was the statement that the location of the substations were in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Again, my, my mistake was that I was focused on the data center facilities and not the public service corporation facilities to support them that went in conjunction with them.
May I ask another question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Let's imagine, let's imagine hypothetical, this body were to deny the application, it were appealed to the town council, and they supported the denial. Is the applicant then able to reapply at a later date, or is it then off the table, or for a year, or for perpetuity, or whatever?
I don't believe there's any statutory language that would prohibit them from reapplying. However, the material facts likely would not change without there being an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
What I deduce from that is that we could, in effect, and if, if the majority were to determine, we have a lot of new information that just has come down in the last week, and some of it in the last day or two. I'm seeing letters for the first time today that are substantive and full of content, apart from the commentary we have directly here. We could, on that basis, reasonably deny, not with the intention of ultimately stopping, but with the intention of gaining more time to investigate and research, without actually imperiling the project. It would, of course, there is the appeal to the council, and we would, you know, the council will do as the council will, deems best, but it strikes me that, again, what I deduce from the information I'm getting here is that the commission can deny the application without killing it, as, as an indirect way of getting more time to look, look through it and digest the really very substantive input that we're getting here.
It just takes the, it just throws the rock to council, that's all it would do. It won't come back to us.
It depends. If they support the denial, then it could be, the, the application could be resubmitted through this, if I'm hearing correctly, and I know Andrew will correct me if I'm not, but if I'm hearing right, it can, the application then can be submitted again at a future date?
Could it be submitted again at a future date with the substations in a different location?
They, if, if that were the reason, it certainly could. The difficulty with that is that it would involve likely, and again, we'd have to look at what was proposed, amendments to the rezonings because of the proffered conceptual development plans that show these locations.
Gotcha. We have amendments one way or the other, is what you're saying?
Likely so. And, and the reason why, through the rezoning process, if you recall, the substations were located here is they were seen as less objectionable than having data center structures in the closer proximity to the residential development.
So I have one other question. But according to 2232, if they bury all of the line coming in, it doesn't matter if they're in conformance or not? Am I reading that correctly? I mean, it's, it basically says, 2230 says that, so would it be exempt as part of the paragraph that says that an underground electric distribution facility of a public utility is defined in Subsection 56, 265.1? I mean, if they bury the line in, it doesn't matter if it's part of, if it's compliant with the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Assistant, I, I am splitting hairs, but it's not distribution and transmission.
You want to tell him what the cost would be?
The underground electric distribution facility?
Anything over, anything under 34.5 is, is distribution, 115 and above is transmission.
Got it.
The cable required to bury 230 is bigger than my leg, and is hundreds of dollars per foot, as well as 50 or 60 pounds per foot.
Hundred times the cost of overhead.
Hundred times the cost of overhead?
At least.
What about maintenance? Maintenance seems like.
Don't dig it up.
No.
Seems like it'd be easier to maintain. You're not going to get a tree to fall on.
You're not going to get a tree to fall on.
Well, yeah, that is pretty high, you're right.
That's true. It's just interesting that in 2232, it actually carves out, that if you bury this underground electric distribution facility, then you don't even need basically to have a.
That's why all the developers want the power lines buried.
Right, right.
From what I read, 60% of all the power lines in Culpeper are buried.
Their distribution.
Yeah, yeah. But it makes Culpeper look nicer, I think, anyway.
I think you're, you're alluding to the, the great, the increased cost to the, I guess, to the developers of burying the lines. Is that, am I understanding you right? If they were to bury the lines, you said the cost would be a hundred times greater? Did I misunderstand you?
This power supplier?
Yeah, it's, it's likely would, would be passed on in some way from the power supplier, but whether it would be directly to the developer or borne across the entirety of their system and ratepayers, that's not clear.
How would that be determined?
That's beyond me. I, I'm not familiar, I'm afraid.
The reason I ask is that there's an underlying issue in this whole consideration here, which is a lot of money is going to be made in these projects, in these two developments, and that's, there are a couple of ways that, that money can be made, and one is generation of new value, and that's, you know, that's the capitalist American system, and I think we all applaud that. Another way that that wealth can be generated is by a transfer of wealth. And again, I'm not the final expert on this, I don't know, but I'm hearing a lot of community concern, and if the concern's about effect on residential property values is valid, then the wealth generation will be partly at least a transfer of wealth from the town residents to the shareholders of the companies operating those data centers, and that, I think, would be not laudable, but deplorable. And I come back to, you know, I understand the 16-day limit, but I come back to, it's really problematic to be asked, to act on this when there's a body of information and input that we really haven't had the time, had the opportunity to work through thoughtfully and responsibly.
Mr. Chairman, can you just switch back to the slide that shows the comp plan? I mean, because all we're really being asked here is, we're supposed to communicate our findings to the governing body, indicating approval or disapproval, with written reasons therefore, whether this is compliant with the comprehensive plan?
And again, the comprehensive plan itself, as was referenced here, is largely silent on these facilities themselves, which is why the analysis went back to the rezonings and highlighted the components that were considered at that time, because these are seen as being necessary to facilitate and support that development.
Right. So on this slide, this, on the support side, the economic development is fairly obvious. I mean, money will come in from these projects. Do, would, would you, would we consider data centers to be employment center? Right? I mean, the data centers employ a couple dozen people. Employment center is like a distribution, I mean, be like, what, I mean, it'd be some, a place like Swift.
The description was, is fairly broad. It, it's not limited in terms of the comprehensive plan to specifically generation of number of jobs per square foot, whatever the case may be. With the size of these campuses, they are anticipated to bring a number of, a fairly significant number of jobs. Now, again, from a density perspective, it's not as high as, as many other producers, but there are a number of relatively high-paying jobs that are associated with these facilities that would be anticipated to be brought in.
And then on the down, on the con side, it's currently designated as a mixed-use business district.
Correct.
So just on the face of it, it doesn't match with what is technically on-the-shelf comp plan today. But I agree.
And again, that, that's your determination, the commission's determination, staff has made, has made no recommendation on this, because it's not our place to determine that conformity.
But the comprehensive plan is a living document. The future land use shows this as industrial.
Shows it as employment center.
Employment center. But we're looking at ordinance changes that have this all tagged industrial.
Correct. Well, it, it is now zoned industrial.
Right, right.
That was the rezoning.
Right.
That went through.
So it's, yeah, so in some ways, the comp plan is laggy. I mean, the, the land is zoned M2.
Again, when it went through the rezoning process, one of the key considerations was how the applications conform to the comprehensive plan.
Right.
That was a consideration that went into the analysis and, and the deliberations of both the planning commission and town council. Planning commission found fit to support the one application and had a split vote on the other.
Mr. Clements, just a little background, you weren't here when we were listening to the rezoning. The applicant has basically proffered this would be nothing but a data center. So you can't have a data center without the substation, and you can't have a subs, and if you don't have a substation, you're not going to have a data center. And so the applicant would probably just be forced, unless council was to overturn, to apply for rezoning.
Or, or take it down to court.
Yeah. Well, there's many, many levels above us.
Sure, exactly. Not my, not my problem. Yeah.
So basically, it's an error of omission that we're all here today to talk about, something that should have already been done.
May I request that you repeat the point you made with respect to how the station is not in conformance with the comp plan?
I just said that, you know, as, as you look at the comp plan, as it is, you know, in printed binder version today.
Right, right.
That is mixed-use business district.
Right.
So in that, you know, in that element, it would not be compliant. But it is interesting, as we look for, again, that the future land use map does indicate that we have, that the current zoning is into, and that when we go, you know, part of all of these things are related, right? So this re, these sort of, the ordinance alphabet soup that we're also working on, these changes of, you know, the RX and RT and all of that, has all of this as industrial. Everything east of the, or not everything, but almost everything east of the railroad tracks.
Because it is industrial now.
Right, because it is industrial now.
It's a fact on the ground.
That's exactly right, right. Yeah, so when weirdly, so weirdly, if you don't look at anything before, and you just look at right now, and you say, does a substation fit in an industrial area, then maybe it does. But is that still compliant with the comprehensive plan?
Part of the case that was made against Copper Ridge rezoning was that it was, the department doesn't make a recommendation, but the analysis, I think, how do I say this without saying it wrong, analysis was that on balance, it's in conformance with the comp plan, but there were those present at the meeting who just, who disagreed with that and took the opposite side of that argument. And you will, you may have seen some.
Yeah, I did, I saw, yeah, yeah. And I definitely saw that ultimately, this went to council without recommendation.
Yeah.
From the planning commission.
I have a question about that, how we can deal with afterwards. It's not really related to that point. I'll ask that question after we resolve the main issue here.
One other question. Now, we're looking at these together, but those two rezonings were considered separately.
Correct.
And, and the technology campus was forwarded from the planning commission with recommendation for approval.
Yes, it was.
The first one.
First one, yeah. So.
We knew there was going to be a housing buffer.
Right. But what, but I guess my question is, why would we be looking at these as a pair today?
Because essentially, they're co-located, so it's, it seemed appropriate. If, if the commission wishes to separate them, they could do so, but they are located immediately adjacent to one another.
And the current, well, and the comp plan has both of these properties in the mixed-use residential.
Correct. There's no, the, the analysis wouldn't be different in the two cases.
Is the request, the correction required for both substations, or just for the, the, I can't get the name right, the non-Copper Ridge one?
Both. We didn't, did not make the finding on either application.
Can I ask, I mean, for some clarification on what, I mean, the members of the commission who were on the commission at the time, what was marketably different between the technology center and the Copper Ridge projects? I mean, do you know why one would go with recommendation for approval and one would not?
I think I'm the only one present who was on the nay side of that vote. I'm not sure where John would have come out, but he was advised, and properly so, to recuse himself. But I, and I can't, I'm not going to say I can replicate all the thought that went into it. It was a year ago, I don't remember all the details and nuances. One issue was that we were, we had already converted one section, a substantial resource, the remaining undeveloped land of the town to this particular purpose, to an industrial use, and that there was, there were viable concepts in which that, the remaining land would be developed for purposes that were of more benefit to the town as a whole community. So that's one reason, either as residential use or more proper conventional sense of the mixed-use land use, that was, I think, so that was a key issue. And that's the only one I can remember right off the top of my head, you know, speaking exp, temporarily now without any notes or materials to refer back to.
But there was certain element that because the Culpeper Technology Center had been first, it didn't pose the same risk as the second property would.
It's, how much the town do you want to dedicate to data centers? It's, if you have a mixed economy, it's reasonable to have, you know, it seems reasonable to have some industrial use like that, but then to double, or I don't know if it's exact mathematically double, but to essentially double the amount of the town, of the limited scarce resource of town land to that specific purpose, particularly given the uncertainty about externalities, didn't strike, in my opinion, was imprudent and not the best use of that land, not the best use of that, not the optimal use of that land in service of the town, township as a whole. Does that make sense?
Also.
Yes, it does. Yeah, it does.
There were some other, at least on, on the Culpeper Technology Center, it's down on a hole. You're not going to see much of anything. It's been for sale forever as R3.
It was split zone, there was some industrial zoning, but there was some residential zoning.
A lot of vegetation around that, too.
Yeah, and, and right across the street was Swift. There was another proposed data center which was going to come along.
Almar is right across the street, too.
Right.
Which is another data center.
It's like, oh, okay, yeah. And my thought had been, well, we'll eventually, we'll get the housing, housing buffer, the housing stock that I think that we need, that Culpeper sorely lacking. It's like, okay, so that'll eventually develop. And so it was, it's like, but it went from one more to now everything is, and the whole corridor is sold out.
Andrew, one question on the comprehensive plan, isn't it, haven't we started a rewrite?
We have not started yet. We, we're looking to begin that once we complete the update to the zoning and subdivision ordinance.
We're required every five years to review it, anyway.
Correct. And, and we essentially, we meet that criteria, as we did review a component related to urban development areas. We made an amendment to the plan.
Maybe we should address this one when we rewrite?
Certainly.
There's no more deliberations or questions for Mr. Helpel? There's no more deliberations or questions for Mr. Helpel? Is there a motion?
I'll come to my other question right now, and this is addressed by another member of the town council who wrote about this. The paragraph on the executive summary, the last paragraph in the executive summary says, "Ultimately, the planning commission and town council have found their proposed use did, on balance, conform with comprehensive plan as they supported the rezonings of the property to industrial two." Is that with respect just to one campus or both campuses?
The, the comprehensive plan, as I said, is used as, as the primary evaluation tool for rezonings, and so, town council's action to approve the two rezonings essentially serves largely to give indication that, in general, they found it to conform, is, would be my interpretation of that. It's not as strongly supported. I, I actually was mistaken in, in terms of what the state code reads, in terms of a governing body's obligation in relation to a rezoning with the comprehensive plan. I thought there was stronger language in there that they must find it in conformance that does not exist, so council may have had other reasons. In terms of the staff report analysis, it was primarily based on the combination of the council's designation of the technology zone over this area and the projects, how the project would fit relative to the comprehensive plan.
So, the expression "on balance" there is really doing a lot of work. And I'll read from the town council's communication here. "As you know, many factors were considered regarding the rezoning, but since no one council was, no one on council was polled as to the reasons we voted for the rezoning, I think it's presumptuous to state that our action is tacit acknowledgement of its conformity to the comprehensive plan. I certainly don't. I think it's debatable as to whether the da- a data center can be characterized as an employment center. And plainly, the, this body, the planning commission, didn't agree with respect to Copper Ridge that it was in conformance with the comprehensive plan, as they made no recommendation." So, as I say, I think saying "on balance" there really does quite a lot of work.
Is there any way we can make a motion that would approve the substation and the transmission power lines as they are suggested, but allow the vendor to move them during the site plan?
That's the only two things that are concerning me.
The, the difficulty is the, and this is where some discretion falls to me in my role with the town as the zoning administrator. The applicants have committed to substantial, I believe it's substantial conformity to their conceptual development plans. And that's essentially a guarantee that, that, that works both ways. It sort of essentially serves to protect them, it also serves to protect the town as far as what that layout will be for the proposed development. There certainly could be some flexibility to shift the substations slightly further away, but to completely reorient them on the site, I would be hard pressed to find that, you know, essentially as was discussed here, to move them up closer to McDevitt Drive and, and to move...
The only thing I'm suggesting is, I don't want to make a motion that restricts them from moving it up to McDevitt Drive. If they can find a, a good way of doing it, or they would rather do it that way, I don't want to restrict them by voting on something today that would restrict that move.
I, I certainly think, i- i- if there is a comfort level from the planning commission to support it, you could certainly support that the situation of these public service corporation facilities on these properties is appropriate and conforms to the plan without specifying that particular location.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You want to move the substations up toward McDevitt? Wouldn't that push the higher tall buildings closer to the...
Not necessarily.
Town?
There's a lot of room up there. There is, between the things. And, by the way, when you're moving it, those higher tall buildings are 900 feet away from the cemetery. They're probably about 2,000 feet away from East Street. It's a long way away. As, as a matter of fact, visual sight, I think you're better off with the data centers there because there's grass area for 900 feet, where if we didn't rezone it, you'd have townhouses right up against the cemetery. I mean, that 900 feet would be filled up with about two or three roads and a bunch of houses.
I was curious, because I think that was the purpose of putting the substation on that side.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just because it shifts the buildings further away visually from the town, from East Street.
I think it, it looked like a good location for it. I mean, if, everything that they need to fit, fits right there in that particular area. I don't know. But, anyway, what I, what I'm trying to do is, I don't want to restrict the developer from moving if he thought it was necessary or could move it. I don't want him to say, "Well, I can't move it because you approved this." So, I just want to leave it sort of a little more open.
Mr. Serio, you've probably been speaking out of order, but I believe there's a mechanism for that already, for the applicant to just come to us with the change and change the proffers. Am I correct?
A change the proffers does essentially restart or reopen the public hearing process. And so, there is the potential, or the, the ability of the applicant to do so. However, I think it unlikely that they would be desirous of reopening the public hearings on those cases.
All I want to do is get the right words, so I'm not restricting anything, but I am allowing it. As personally, I can see it where it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan in many areas. Some areas it may not be, but...
Ready to put that into a motion?
I don't know how to word it. That's what I'm asking, some help with wording it, where it can still move further away.
It's like, that's, that's not what the, that's not the question. The question is not, there's no, nothing on that slide says to add additional flexibility to move the stuff around for, as the developers' discretion.
Well, I know that's not what he's asking, but that's what I, that's the, if you want me to make a motion, I'd want that in the motion.
And Mr., well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, to that, to John's point, I, I want us to have real reasons. I mean, so, right, we're supposed to move this to council with written reasons for why, why we're, we're being supporter, opposition to this, you know, in writing. There are, there's a starting point on that slide. I mean, you can certainly add to the opposition side that we have no idea what this is actually going to look like. And so, how would we be, how would we know if this isn't in compliance? With, I mean, we, at this table, we have no idea how tall the towers would be, the transmission towers. We really have no concept of what 10 acres of, I mean, you do, but you know what I mean? Like this idea of, of what 10 acres of transmission substation look like. This is unchartered. So, you could almost say that, that, I mean, I could almost say, not the board, you know, the commission, but I'm just saying, if, you know, if I'm looking for a reason to be opposed, one of it is that there are more questions that have not been answered than have been.
Well, it's intriguing, and it could start an interesting dialogue, but anybody could go on Google and type in data center, substation, and you're going to get pictures. So, we can't say we don't know what it's going to look like, we just haven't chosen to do that.
We're not looking at data center, we're looking at the...
I'm sorry.
Substation.
Substation, yeah.
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 And, and it's totally different to look, I mean, even if you were to look at Loudon, right, just, it's in the middle, like, it's in the middle of where nothing is, right? It's not really affecting. I mean, it's just, it's so, it's, it's Mars now, right? I mean, so, it's not, like, we're literally, you're trying to stick a very big use into a very small hole. And it's, you're almost, it almost is an argument in favor of Loudon, where you can just scorch earth and put it all in one place. The biggest argument in support is the economic development. But, certainly, certainly.
Unless it adversely affects the economic development, the potential and dimensions of tourism, for example.
That area wouldn't.
Well, it's the debate, but...
Tourism doesn't, they don't, and no one goes across the tracks, unless you're going to the cemetery. That's about the only reason.
I'm just saying it's debatable. I think it's debatable. I would debate it, let's put it that way. But, but that's not really the point right now, that, that, that vote has sailed. Can I ask one question, going back, way back to the beginning of the meeting? If, let's say the conformity is, is approved, is that, am I saying the right, saying that right? Then, the authority over the, the organization of lines into the township, the authority of that moves to the FCC?
The, the authority already for the transmission lines above 138 kilovolts was already with the State Corporation Commission.
Okay. Second, I know I said one question, but I'm going to sneak another one in. What would be required to break the approval for the two campuses, the conformity approval and to two separate approvals, one for each campus?
If the planning commission wishes to do so, they, they, they may do so.
It would be a vote or, or a request by one member, or...
Certainly could do so.
It would be part of our written recommendations, I guess, that, right?
Well, I would like to have it done, but I don't know if anybody else wants to. And I'll explain my reasoning for it when we get close to a vote.
I'm curious.
Curious to hear now.
Yeah, John would love to be close to a vote.
Well, I voted that, as a member of the commission, I voted in favor of the first campus. It seemed to me that it was in conformance with the comp plan, which is our purview as, as the planning commission. And I voted against the second, the Copper Ridge campus because I thought it was not in conformance and not the best use of that land, notwithstanding an outstanding application by the developers. It just didn't seem like the right use of that land. And so, in good, I, I, in good conscience, it would be difficult for me to vote against the conformity for the first campus. It would equally be, you know, difficult for me in good conscience to vote for the conformity on the second, since I already, I'm on the record and vociferously so in saying that I don't think that the Copper Ridge conforms with the plan. So, I would, I, for my, the benefit of my conscience, I would prefer to be able to vote differently on the two campuses. Did I explain that adequately?
What did you want to put in the words? Didn't you say you wanted...
I suppose I would make a motion to the effect that the commission will act separately on the conformity approval for each of the two campuses. Is that adequate? Ballpark?
Please, sir.
Good enough for government work? So, that's, does that satisfy you?
Yeah, I just want to know what the words were.
So, I guess I make that motion?
Yes, sir. Would you state it?
I move that the commission... act separately to approve each of the two conformities for the, what's the name of the first technology camp?
Culpeper Technology Campus.
For the Culpeper Technology Campus and for the Copper Ridge Technology Campus. Want me to say that again?
No, we're voting to...
So, actually, you wouldn't need a motion, you could just bring it up individually. So, you could actually make a motion that you find that the substation listed on the technology campus site, proffer, whatever, plan is in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And that would be one motion.
If you want to rescind and...
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. It would be the form of the initial motion. Okay, yeah. Are we there?
I think we are.
Can you repeat the motion for me? No, John, either Kelly or somebody repeat the motion, so we know what we're voting on.
I think James has pointed out that the motion...
He needs to rescind his initial motion and start over.
So, I rescind the initial motion.
And start, okay, gotcha.
I move that the commission, a motion to approve conformity of the Culpeper Technology Campus.
Substation.
Substation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
No.
Very good.
Then move that we vote to disapprove the conformity for the substation for the Culpeper, for the Copper Ridge Technology Campus.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Very good, is there any discussion? All in favor of denying the Copper Ridge substation location?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
I oppose.
You oppose?
No. It's interesting. One got approved, one got disapproved.
That's true.
Send to council.
Well, they have to, they'll be appealed presumably, which is reasonable, that's what I would do.
I suggest we take a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene. Sounds good to me. Yes. That's okay. All right, let's, hey, ready, John? Okay, let's reconvene the meeting of the, regular meeting of the Town and Culpeper Planning Commission. Move on to new business. All right, okay. Public hearings allow the commission to gather information for interest, from interested citizens on the agenda items. Citizens may speak in reference to each item on the agenda for a time usually limited to three minutes. Commissioners and staff may ask questions of anyone attending the hearing. Speakers are not to direct questions or comments to each other. Speakers are not allowed additional time for rebuttal. This is a hearing, not a debate. Questions may be directed to commissioners and community development staff during office hours. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing SS4A.
Good evening. I'm Louis Pampati, town planner, and I'll be presenting the SS4A Vision Zero Plan. Some of the information, especially the beginning of this presentation, will be a repeat of the April work sessions so that the public can see it as well. The town received funds from the SS4A grant program to develop a Vision Zero Action Plan. Vision Zero is an innovative approach for analyzing and preventing traffic-related fatalities and severe injuries with the goal of eventually eliminating all traffic-related deaths. It also promotes using the safe systems approach shown here to understanding traffic injuries and how we can make an impact as policymakers. An action must, or an action plan must include the components shown here. I won't go into every detail of the draft that was shared with you, but I will go through some of the key components and findings, and of course, the recommendations at the end. Vision, or, the vision of this plan will be to achieve zero roadway deaths within the town of Culpeper by 2034. Vision Zero plans do require a commitment be made for eliminating fatalities in a timeframe in which it can be achieved a resolution. With this plan will be passed, committing the town to this goal. First, equity considerations are required, an important part of an action plan. To make sure all voices are heard and to ensure that disadvantaged communities were not ignored in the project selection process, we have analyzed the makeup of the community. This community profile will also help reveal trends and data that will be important to the planning of transportation projects. We found that the population of the town has doubled since the year 2000. This growth rate is much higher than that of Virginia. More than a fifth of the town's population identifies as a... More than a fifth of the town's population identifies as Hispanic or Latino. The survey that was distributed to the community was translated into Spanish to account for Spanish speakers in the town. Although 24.9% of residents report commuting less than 10 minutes, only about 3.6% report walking to work. The median age of the town is 34.4, and 32% of the town's population is under the age of 20. What is interesting about this, as we'll see in the data analysis, is that nearly 28% of distracted drivers involved in a crash were under the age of 21. In terms of income and housing, one of the things we found that was that people who rent spend more on housing than people who do not. The town does have a higher percentage of rent or occupied housing than Virginia as a whole. Potential projects in areas with high levels of rental units should be included in the plan. We used VDOT crash data to analyze all crashes between 2018 and 2022. Of the 1,302 crashes that were reported, seven were fatal and 22 resulted in severe injuries. We were able to use GIS to create this heat map. It shows where the most, where most crashes occurred, and the dots show the locations of the crashes that resulted in visible, severe, and fatal injuries. Some of the findings of the data analysis were that more than half of the crashes occurred at intersections. Four of the seven fatal crashes involved pedestrians. Of the 29 fatal or severe crashes, 11 involved alcohol and 12 occurred in dark road conditions. Another really important aspect of the plan was the creation of a High Injury Network, or HIN. It identifies the corridors of the town with a higher concentration of not only crashes, but of those that result in fatal or severe injuries. To create this, we rated every road segment within the town. This is what's shown on the map on the left-hand side. Each segment was then rated based on the total number of crashes. Severe crashes were heavily rated. Pedestrian crashes were rated even further as those tend to be more severe on average. The highest scoring segments were then connected to create a comprehensive corridor showing the most dangerous roadways in the town. The High Injury Network represents only 13.5% of the public roadway. Of all crashes, 64.34% occurred in the HIN, and it also includes 82.67% of the severe and fatal crashes. We also distributed an online survey within the community. Improving pedestrian safety and accessibility was the highest-rated focus among respondents. Difficulty crossing intersections and lack of sidewalks were the most cited walking-related issues. Drivers had the most issues with congestion on the roads. More sidewalks and trails were ranked as the best strategy for improving walking. More signalized crosswalks were also highly ranked. For improving driving, survey participants ranked increased signage, pavement markings, reducing speed, and more roundabouts the highest. As a result of the analysis of the data, we were identified, we were able to identify five priority areas for improving safety. The first is crashes involving pedestrians. Most of the fatal crashes involve pedestrians, therefore, in order to reduce fatalities on the road, pedestrian safety should be one of our top priorities. Next was crashes in dark conditions. Six of the seven fatal crashes occurred in the dark, and the other one was at dusk. The lack of lighting was also cited multiple times in the survey. We will see in the, the map, in the draft report, shows the lighting in the town. This can be used to identify where new lights are needed. Crashes at intersections was another focus. South Main Street and James Madison Highway saw a large number of these crashes and were also a common complaint in the community survey. On Main Street, over 30% of intersection crashes occurred where a traffic signal was present, and 18 occurred where the traffic control measure was a stop sign. Improvements in the HIN should also be a top priority. However, a lot of the HIN currently has approved or pending projects that are coming, hopefully, in the near future. As for driver behavior, of total crashes, only 6.76 involved alcohol. However, of fatal and severe crashes, nearly 38% involved alcohol, as did seven of the nine pedestrian crashes. VDOT classifies drivers or pedestrians as seniors if they are over the age of 65, and as young if they are under the age of 21. About 48% of all crashes involved a driver or pedestrian that is classified as either a senior or is young.
52% are everybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the grant, we were able to hire consultants Hurt and Profit and EPRPC to conduct a pedestrian study of the downtown area. The recommendations from that were incorporated into the action plan. For deliverables, they did provide corridor profile sheets showing where improvements can be implemented and a toolkit with information about the proposed improvements. Here's an example of one of the profile streets. So this is for Davis Street from Blue Ridge Avenue to Commerce Street. It recommends high-visibility crosswalks to relate, to replace the current stamped brick crosswalks. This would increase driver awareness of the potential, of the potential for crossing pedestrians. It also recommends curb extensions, ADA curb ramp upgrades, pedestrian signal upgrades, raised crosswalks, and stop sign improvements. Lighting is a major corridor improvement that can be made in most areas of the downtown. These sheets include a projected cost as well of the improvement that was used during the prioritization of the projects, as we'll go over in a bit. The toolkit has further information regarding improvements such as ADA curb ramp upgrades, high-visibility crosswalks, median refuges, pedestrian signal upgrades, raised intersections, school zones, speed enforcement, improved signal timing, lighting, and curbing, curb extensions, as shown here. The toolkit describes the safety benefits of the improvement and, as well as additional information. In this case, curb extensions increase pedestrian and vehicle visibility. It reduces pedestrian crossing distance, reduces the speed of turning vehicles, and encourages pedestrians to cross at designated locations. Next was the formulation of the action plan. To realize our vision of zero fatalities, three goals were developed. To reach these goals, we created more specific strategies and then projects that correspond with these strategies. Goal number one is to institutionalize a focus on safeties. The strategies for this goal were to create policies and plans with a focus on safety to include traffic calming, complete streets, and other safe system approach principles, to prioritize projects within the High Injury Network, and to conduct studies to inform and improve the data analysis. Goal number two is to design streets to be safe for all users. These strategies include increasing visibility on all streets by effectively illuminating the roadway and improving signage at street markings, improve pedestrian cyclist safety by implementing complete street principles, connecting the sidewalk and pedestrian network, and by improving accessibility, improve the driver safety and traffic throughout town by implementing complete street principles using the safe system approach when analyzing and developing project, and by installing traffic calming measures, and to ensure representation and public involvement in the planning process. And lastly, goal number three was to create a culture of safety. And these strategies include reducing the number, or reducing dangerous behavior through education and enforcement, and regularly monitoring and reevaluating the action plan. Individual projects were prioritized based on three factors: the safety benefit, the projected cost, and the equity considerations. Each project was given a value for each category, then the priority was classified as high, medium, or low. The projects were grouped into operational projects, infrastructure projects, and behavioral projects. In the interest of time, I'll quickly go over the list of proposed projects, but I'll be happy to go into more detail if there's any particular project you'd like to, like more information on. So first, we have revising the Facility Standards Manual to become more safety-focused, develop a process to incorporate safety improvements with future maintenance projects, implement complete street guidance, seek grant funding for safety improvements, which this plan will actually open the door for, conduct a street lighting study, collect traffic counts and speeds, travel, develop a process for citizens to request studies and improvements, monitor action plan success, and strengthen our relationship with the schools when it comes to these transportation projects. For infrastructure projects, we have proposed highly, or high-visibility crosswalks, ADA curb ramp upgrades, curb extensions, sidewalk insulation, stop sign improvements, pedestrian signal upgrades, median refugees, bus stop improvements, and the conversion of two-way streets into one-way streets. Again, the corridor profile sheets that were provided in the appendix do show some of the recommended locations for those improvements. We also recommend improving signal timing, installing raised crosswalks, utility pole relocation, and intersection reconfiguration in some locations. So lastly, we have the behavioral projects. Recommended is multi-language publications for all future transportation-related documents, seatbelt safety enforcement signage, DUI checkpoints, driver education programs, more wayfinding signage, and school speed zone enforcement. So this plan will be publicly available on the town's website. Each year, the task force will track the progress of all the projects. This can be done as part of the Culpeper 2030 Plan. The plan will also be reviewed and updated every five years. New crash data that will be available will help reveal the successes and weaknesses of the proposed strategies and projects. So tonight, we are looking for the planning commission to provide a recommendation to town council for adoption of the plan. Town council will also be asked to pass a resolution committing to the goal of reducing roadway deaths and fatalities to zero by 2034. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Could you go back through the slide you had on the priority areas where you showed little balloons where, where there were a lot of accidents? Yeah, there, there you go. It looks like your high accident rate is very close to where the speed limits are changing.
Oh.
Do you know what direction the accident rate is in? So you, I, I, are you supposed to slow down, and they're not slowing down, or are you supposed to speed up, and they're not speeding up, or?
That would be something we can look at the crash data for, to, for those more specific questions.
It seems like it would be interesting to find out, because they are in areas.
The, to be honest, the vast majority is at the intersections themselves and are often related in some way to some sort of turning movement.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
There, there are some rear-end crashes, which would be indicative of potential speeding, speeding changes and items like that, but the, the majority are angle crashes at the intersections themselves.
Okay, okay. Interesting.
All right. I just have one part, and bigger. So can you tell, I mean, there's some information about Vision Zero, but can you explain exactly what Vision Zero is, what the Vision Zero Network is, and what, you know, is there a bigger movement that Culpeper would be signing on to here?
So Vision Zero is an initiative that is nationwide. There are several, you know, states and localities within those states that have adopted these plans and passed these resolutions. There are also several in Virginia that have as well. And there is a Vision Zero Network that the plan can be submitted to and be a part of. It is a nonprofit organization that sort of, that will provide support for staff on, and advice, that sort of thing. It hasn't been our intention as of now to submit that to the Vision Zero Network, but it is still, this plan will still open the door for us to apply for grants under the SS4A program.
So essentially, the federal authorities have largely adopted the principles of the Vision Zero Network. And so in order to qualify for some of their funding sources, we need to, to have a plan on the books that identifies the projects.
You also had a slide up there showing traffic accidents caused by alcohol, distracted driving. Do you have that? There's just one thing that, you have age old, age young. Now, some of those... I'm in the young care. Anyway, like alcohol, it may be one of those, are you double counting, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yes. It could be someone who is young and drowsy, or...
Okay, gotcha.
What are the complete street principles? Is that in the appendix C, or I'm just looking through it now?
It is not. It's actually in our comprehensive plan. Complete streets are streets that essentially provide modes for all users, so like bike lanes, bus lanes, sidewalks that allow pedestrian...
Don't have too many of them, do we?
Actually, on Sperryville was that road diet includes some complete street with the bike lane and pedestrian improvements.
The, the whole document, in my opinion, is hugely impressive, but the appendix B is kind of amazing. Is that, was that your work, or the, I mean, not that it matters that much, but did the contractor do that?
Yes, that was Hurt and Profit and EPR.
Yeah, I mean, that's a really fine-grained breakdown. It's very impressive. I mean, it's, again, it's all very impressive, but this is a nice piece to have attached to do it.
And we see the benefit of that, is essentially it provides an à la carte option as opportunities arise for us to pick and choose potential improvements that we may be able to be eligible for additional funding for.
It's very thorough and enlightening. It's good.
Mr. Chairman, I would love to have a, this, I would actually like to have a discussion about this, and I'm wondering if we should just hold, if you want to open the public here, hold the public hearing, and then we can have a conversation.
That's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Open the public hearing for SS4A Culpeper Vision Zero Action Plan. Is there anybody you'd like to approach? Please, come and state your name.
Sarita Fought, 506 Blue Ridge Avenue. Some of the suggestions, they're all very good suggestions, but, you know, we have very narrow streets downtown, and when you're talking in terms of, you know, widening the, shortening the crosswalks and at the intersections, I'm presuming, and having a refuge stop, my only concern would be, people can't drive between the lines now, and is there going to be enough room? That would be my only thing, is how do you anticipate making that work long range? I know it was a long-range project, but the streets are narrow, so that's my only comment.
Thank you very much.
Actually, one of the suggestions that we were talking about in the past is all new developments, put wider streets in, and that would help. I gotta promote that stuff when I can.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item on the agenda? Public hearing is closed. Commissioned discussion.
Yeah, so, I mean, I could even make the motion, I'll make a motion that, that we forward this to the town council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
And now for discussion. Just, so everyone is aware, there, in my review of this, there were some line edits that are basically, you know, purely missing letters, typo in nature that I forwarded to staff. I also, it'd be interesting to get everyone else's opinion on page 30. I think the map on page 31 is, is, could be better. But again, the nice thing about this document is that this becomes part of the 2030 theoretically, or some process where it just lives, you know, it just won't be the last time we ever see it. As a person who walks regularly downtown, this is probably one of the best things I've ever seen in my time in the planning commission. So I really want to congratulate staff on the awesome job, a lot of hard work, and it really highlights how great our GIS department is.
Yeah, just in terms of full acknowledgement, Mr. Casello started this with the GIS department, and Mr. Pankati has picked it up and done the vast majority of the work with it and done a tremendous job with, and worked with our GIS department.
Now, how does this work if this is accepted? Do we, like, for instance, some of the sidewalks that extend out a little bit into the street to give you clearer view and drivers to see you as well? And if some sites, for instance, if we don't like the idea of those sidewalks being extended, do we, can we have the right to? do we, can we have the right to say no to those particular situations or sites?
Again, this doesn't compel us to do anything. It allows us really to pick and choose. It lays the groundwork essentially, at the federal level, within the Safe Streets for All program, they have what's called planning grants and then implementation grants. And this is part of the planning grants phase that essentially lays the groundwork to be eligible to come in for those implementation. So we can follow it up with looking to do certain demonstration projects of smaller scale of, you know, illustrating the benefits by putting some of these projects in place. But again, it's going to be the town's discretion as to which ones we pursue and what it is. We recognize the consultants gave us a broad range of options of things, but it's still going to be up to the town to decide what we feel is appropriate for our community.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That passes. Next on the agenda, we have the Beard Appeal, VAR 4835 2024.
Mr. Beard, if I may, I'll give a quick overview first, and then we'll give you the chance to present your case.
Yes, sir.
So what we have before you this evening, it's a little bit unusual. It's an appeal of the zoning administrator's interpretation of the subdivision ordinance per town code. This is something that comes to the Planning Commission to hear. The situation that's come about is Mr. Beard and his family, they wish to create a family subdivision lot within the town limits. The parcel would be accessed from an ingress egress easement. It would not have public road frontage. And they are appealing, well, let me go back and cover, what are the provisions for a family subdivision per Virginia State Code? Essentially, for a family members, you're able to create lots of less than five acres with a reasonable right-of-way of not less than ten feet or more than twenty feet, providing that ingress and egress through a, to a street. Also included in the state code that discusses the ability, or the provision of these family subdivisions, is the ability for localities to impose additional requirements on a family subdivision. So when you look at the town code and the town subdivision ordinance as it relates to family subdivisions, it states that family subdivisions shall comply with Chapter 27, Chapter 27 is the town zoning ordinance of the town code, the Facility Standards Manual, and other laws and regulations of the town. So essentially, it does facilitate that you can do a family subdivision. However, you have to meet all of the other standards related to a lot within the town. So what that means is that my interpretation on this is that a family subdivision is permitted within the town of Culpeper. However, that subdivision and the lots that stem from the subdivision must comply with the provisions found within the town zoning ordinance and facility standards manual. There are concerns, and Mr. Beard has filed an appeal as well to the Board of Zoning Appeals as related to the provisions of the zoning ordinance and the interpretation there. The appeal that's coming to the Planning Commission is related strictly to the subdivision ordinance and this particular provision within it and the zoning administrator's interpretation thereof. So that's my overview, and now I see the floor to Mr. Beard to present his appeal.
Hi, how are you all? My name is Carson Beard, and this item is on the agenda because of me. I desire to build a house on family property to start a home with my wife. And it's something that, you know, I've lived in this community my whole life. I served this community. I want to be a part of it, and I want to be next to my family, near my family. As far as potential harm to those adjoining properties, I have letters from all of those owners stating that they have no objection, and if you'd like to look at them, you're welcome to look at them. I guess really what Mr. Hopewell has pointed out is the code section, which I think is the most pertinent part of this argument. And he indicates that in his letter that he provided, that it may, it reaffirms this by stating in the final sentence that such divisions shall be, shall be subject to all requirements of the Code of Virginia and to any requirements imposed by the local governing body. So sort of stressing that part in the code. However, in that little section, it says, "may include reasonable provisions permitting divisions." So that statute was created basically at a time when there were more farms, and people were dividing it among family members to help with the farm and to help with the family. Of course, we don't have a farm, but I would love to help with my family, because I would be right next to them. So it says, "may include reasonable provisions." My argument is that a reasonable provision is not every other provision of every other subdivision in the town of Culpeper. Otherwise, the statute wouldn't even need to exist, because you wouldn't need to say that, you know, these subdivisions are allowed if it had to follow every other subdivision ordinance or code in the locality. So that this, this subsection, I think, points out that it's, "may include reasonable provisions permitting divisions." I argue that reasonable provisions are not applicable to every other subdivision in the town of Culpeper. You may disagree with that interpretation, but I think, again, my argument is that code section wouldn't even need to exist if it had to comply with every other subdivision. It just wouldn't need, it would be, it would be a useless code section. So I think in the town ordinance, they could have done one of two things, I think. They could have just flat out left out the part about family subdivision, and then I think it, I wouldn't have a leg to stand on. I think it would be clearly, I wouldn't be able to do that. Or they could have, in the, I guess negative, had said, "The town of Culpeper does not recognize family subdivisions per statute 152244." But they didn't. Instead, in the ordinance, it does recognize family subdivisions, but puts the requirement to fall in line with every other subdivision, which I think was probably at that time it was done, perhaps an oversight. So I think that, I think the town ordinance there probably would need some reworking, but, and I would implore that it would be reworked in the positive for people to allow these family subdivisions with reasonable provisions. Because I think it's important, especially in times like these, to be near your family, to be, to help your family. And that's what this statute was devised for. And I think imposing requirements of every other subdivision is against the Code of Virginia there. I'm happy to share the letters. I have pictures of the specific property. Be happy to take any other questions. But again, my argument is that the town ordinance can't simply say it has to comply with every other subdivision. Otherwise, this code section would be irrelevant.
Mr. Beard, what were you lacking in meeting the subdivision requirements?
So it has to have a, Mr. Hopewell can probably add, but it has to have a certain setback. In fact, my parents' property, which is located right next to it, uses a driveway to a town road, which I don't think would be allowed today. So I would simply ask that, you know, when we do, when we would do this deed, it would have a road maintenance agreement for that driveway to meet to the town street. So I, I think that's the main issue.
Okay. Is the access because only two houses are allowed off a driveway, not three?
Because it has to, well, actually, it's, no, I think it's road frontage setback in the beginning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter the number. In fact, like I said, my parents, it's one house, that wouldn't be allowed today. They wouldn't be allowed to do what they did back in 1990 today, which is, I think, unfortunate, but, so again, I would just ask that this be allowed, and perhaps that town ordinance, which is Section 22-41, needs to be addressed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
The specific provision in town code related to this appeal reads, "Appeals of administrative decisions. Unless otherwise stated in this chapter, any person aggrieved of the decisions of the zoning administrator with respect to approval or disapproval of any portion of this chapter may, within ten days of such decision, appeal directly to the Planning Commission by request to be placed on the agenda of the next regularly scheduled meeting." So what you're being asked to determine is whether the decision of myself as the zoning administrator to apply the provisions of the zoning ordinance and the facility standards manual to this instance is appropriate. The validity of that code section itself is a separate matter, and if Mr. Beard wishes to challenge that, that would be a legal matter to be taken up. So in terms of the Planning Commission's, the request, it's, it can only be, it's constrained to essentially my interpretation of that existing language, not the validity of that language itself.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out just for clarification, Virginia Code 152-2244, as we are all aware through training, Virginia is a Dillon Rule state. So this is put into code, a subdivision ordinance may include reasonable provisions, right? So basically, the state is telling localities, you guys can work this out. The town has taken action. They created an ordinance that says that you must comply with the facilities, the FSM. So this is, so these are not in conflict with one another.
And moreover, the state in delegating that discretion to the locality sort of reemphasizes that discretion by saying you must, you must, that the provision must conform with any additional locality regulation, right?
The next line.
Yeah.
Such divisions shall be subject to all requirements of the Code of Virginia and to any requirements imposed by the local governing body.
Meaning we can be more restrictive, but not less.
And it could be that what we, what the town has adopted in the ordinance isn't reasonable, but it doesn't mean that the administrator's determination was not in line with that, with what's there, which is also why the BZA exists.
Right.
It's like there's a provision for an exception, but the exception is governed by the discretion of the town's discretion. There isn't a conflict between the state and the local, the state code and the local ordinance. Am I saying it wrong?
Yeah, I think it's exactly backward. The state gives the locality the ability to make their own determinations of what those requirements will be. The town has very firmly said that the subdivision must meet the FSM.
I know you just said this, but I don't understand what is the discrepancy between what the applicant is asking for and what the, what's prescribed.
Most of it is access, it's connector or frontage to a public road.
Right.
So you theoretically, I mean, I think there are options, like the family could somehow turn, they could probably turn it into a private street.
And again, this becomes, part of that interpretation then starts straying into what the BZA determines in terms of the interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
Even with these visual aids, though, I can't visualize. I'm trying to follow the, you know, 4119D and put it together with the coding that's on, you know, on the visual aids, and I can't, I'm sure it's, I'm being a little dumber, but I can't put it together.
So are you familiar with the area at all? So this is the frontage here, do you have this one? So, yeah, so then sort of the, almost like cross-shaped building, right?
Yeah.
Right, the far right side of the screen is Yow Drive.
Okay.
Okay? So there's a house in the front. They're proposing the big square be a new house? And the driveway is...
The one in the corner down there?
What's that?
Sorry, this one right here. And sir, we're not meaning to talk like you're not in the room. We're just trying to surface.
It would be the lot labeled 16,100 square feet.
This is the...
No, the one in the middle.
In the middle.
No, keep going.
Keep going.
The middle of the...
The big square.
Go back a little.
You went too far.
Oh, this?
Yes.
This would be a house.
Yes.
Well, that would be the new lot.
It would be the lot.
It's isolated, so there's a question of right-of-way and, as you see, frontage.
Right, whether or not it has that, yeah, whether it fronts the public. But again, we're, it's interesting because the question, you know, this is funny because this is the way that, as a former member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I can tell you, this is often how conversations happen there as well, which is you're trying to provide relief to an applicant to try to figure out how can you make, we're always trying to get to yes, believe it or not, right? And so you're trying to figure out how you can make this work. But all we're really being asked to do today is, you know, yes or no, was the zoning administrator acting, you know...
Is his determination reasonable?
Based on the, right, the...
Do we agree with him?
The ordinance, exactly, the ordinance that's there.
So if we agree, where does the appeal, the action of the appeal reside? He makes the appeal, but he makes the determination.
An application is in our packet, saying that they've already made an application for a variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is where that would go.
So if we don't dispute Andrew's interpretation, then the action goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Well, maybe both. Hold on a second, we'll get back to you. But I'm just, for the purposes of this, so what's interesting is there's two tracks here. One is you, the variance application is in, so this will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, right? The other option, of course, is that at some point, we could all relook at town ordinance for that specific section and try to come up with some, you know, additional language that would put exceptions in.
Right.
But that's sort of how variances work.
Right.
Right? So...
So however, if this commission denies it, I'm, it's dead, because it, this has to happen first.
And by deny it, if we say that Andrew's interpretation is a reasonable one, that stops it.
Correct. It stops, because...
Why is that your interpretation?
Because then it would not be, I could not subdivide it. Correct, Mr. Hopewell?
Well, then why did you make an application for variance?
Because I had to do both, because it's two separate issues, the way I understood it. One was the zoning, and one was the subdivision.
Essentially, the, there are two appeals, and it's not a variance request, it's an appeal request. It's an appeal to the BZA as well. Essentially, there is, the first is this one, if the commission felt that my interpretation of the subdivision ordinance was incorrect, they would be allowed to proceed, you'd be allowed to proceed essentially under those state guidance as opposed to the town guidance found within the zoning ordinance and the facility standards manual. If the zoning administrator's determination is upheld by the Planning Commission as it relates to the subdivision ordinance, that those other provisions do apply, there is the appeal that's been submitted to essentially look at how the zoning administrator is interpreting the zoning ordinance as it relates to the lot frontage requirement and the measurements thereof.
All right. So, sorry, I'm sorry to monopolize this, but I mean, I...
You're good.
Yeah. So the, so let's just, I mean, for hypothetical, we're, let's just say that we, that the commission determines that you acted appropriately. Why, I mean, this, the reason, or one reason that Board of Zoning Appeals exists is for the purpose of a variance where an applicant determines that their situation is unique and that they are, do some relief from town ordinance. So I'm confused at that point, is, so I'm confused sort of why that BZA, the track that was chosen on that BZA side was chosen. And I guess I understand why it came to us first, but I'm just kind of confused why the applicant doesn't believe that a variance would still be in his, you know, sort of tool belt.
Again, the applicant could choose to apply for a variance. However, the variance would essentially be to the town standards as it relates to lot frontage. The provision of the state code for the five reasons for the granting of a variance, I think they would be hard-pressed to... I think they would be hard pressed to, to demonstrate that they met that threshold. Again, that would be their prerogative if they, if they wanted to do that. But was, what was, what's initially been requested or, or applied for i- is an appeal as opposed to a variance. Because the determination was made that there was the requirement that they have this
Right.
frontage on a public road, um, because they don't meet the, the size threshold to qualify to be accessed through, off of a private road. Um, and so the provisions in the town zoning ordinance and facility standards manual, when combined with the definitions, essentially require them to have at least eighty feet of frontage on a public street.
So you think the appeal is, is unlikely to succeed? And therefore, this is the best chance?
Again, I can't say
I'm not trying to put words in your
Well, again, I, I simply have to apply the code as I read it.
Yeah.
A citizen has the opportunity, if they dispute that, that reading of it.
But you think the appeal is difficult?
The variance request. Again, there, there's an appeal and a variance. Those are two separate things. The, an appeal is
The variance request you think is going to be difficult.
Yeah. So you think that would be difficult, or that's really the route he needs to go, or the variance?
Yeah, a, a variance is, there are, there are essentially, I think, five provisions that need to be met um, per state code for a variance to be granted, including that it is, um, not of the applicant's own making, that it is not so common, this is where I have the concern, that it is not so common that it could not essentially be repeated elsewhere and, and sort of setting a dangerous precedent. Um, so essentially, if there were a variance granted where we're setting a precedent of a requirement not to have public road frontage, all of a sudden, there are a number of properties in town where there could be applications for
We established precedent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, again, this, this would be the Board of Zoning Appeals to make that determination as to the appropriateness. But there, there are state code provisions that outline the criteria that need to be met in order for a variance to be granted. Where we've had instances in the past of variances in, in recent times, they've been related often to accessory structures, to sheds, um, where our town code requires that they be placed in the rear yard, which is beyond essentially the rear, um, line of a house structure. Well, we have certain lots that have zero or almost zero backyards, either through grade or through deconstruction. Um, and so they've applied for variances to essentially situate those in si- side yards. Um, but we're also obligated, if we find there are repeated requests for variances, to look at that within town code. And so that's one of the things we are looking at in the update as well, in terms of these accessory structures.
So I guess my question
You have them talking like you're not in the room.
My question would be this, though, if, if, um, I think it was stated that I, I couldn't really challenge the code, but if I disagree with your decision on the interpretation of the code and the town ordinance, then I can't challenge that.
No, that's what you're doing now, essentially.
But I thought earlier you stated I, I, it would not be appropriate. Otherwise, I'd have to appeal it to a circuit court.
Well, ultimately, that's where it goes, essentially. It's, you can, it, once the, um, the language is a little vague on, on, on appeals of the subdivision ordinance and, and what happens if you disagree with, with, with that decision. So we'd have to, to, to look closely at that. But again, if, if you're arguing the provisions of the code are invalid, that's a, that's a different challenge than appealing the interpretation of the code. That essentially becomes a legal challenge against the town's ordinance.
Right, it's not in conformance with state.
Correct.
Thinking out loud.
So now, I actually have some questions for the, um, some, so the sixteen thousand square foot square, um, that's not the house footprint, right? That's the lot footprint.
And And we intentionally made it larger than the ten thousand square foot lot, which is required by the town.
And then, um, in your, um, what is the, what is the substance of the, the current driveway? I mean, is gravel?
It's gravel.
So, Mr. Hopewell, what is the objection in the subdivision ordinance? Why do they not want gravel driveways leading up to a road without frontage?
That's not contained within the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
That's contained within the facility standards manual.
Okay. So it doesn't meet that either?
Well, a- again, from the, the subdivision ordinance, essentially, where the zoning, where my position as the zoning administrator is that I have to look at the facility standards manual and the zoning ordinance to determine the appropriateness of the lots.
Yes, since it doesn't have road frontage and it's more than, the driveway is really long.
Well, there, there's like, essentially it becomes a private street or reserved strip, which is in the facility standards manual, there are thresholds to, for lots to be able to qualify. They have to be larger than three acres.
Oh. Oh, that, okay. So you have to be a rich farmer.
Yeah, I, I, well, larger than three acres, good luck in town. That's what I'd all, I'd have to say about that. Um, but, um, so I think it really, it, in, in my opinion, it, it kind of hamstrings everybody from being able to really do anything with their property as maybe that code section had intended.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very fascinating question we've been given, because there are two issues, so.
The argument is that, that this, if, um, sorry, I'm getting tired. The argument is that the precedent should be established and the, and the current code provision should be broken in effect because, because they're too constraining. They're unnecessarily constraining. I mean, if that's a fair construction to put on the action.
I think, and you kind of alluded to that, because I think you said either leave out the family subdivision section or say the town doesn't recognize.
Right, I think that was an easy, an easy option. Instead, at that time, they recognized it, but then placed the same requirements on every subdivision, which doesn't seem to be in line with reasonable provisions.
You're saying there should be, in general, the principle is there should be a basis for exceptions, for reasonable exceptions, a reasonable basis for reasonable exceptions. And I, if I understand correctly, that, um, you're saying that that exception clause is actually being shut down?
So
Recluded.
Well, I'm saying that there should be reasonable, or some avenue for reasonable exceptions. However, what I'm saying is we've only been asked here to make a determination whether the zoning administrator
Yeah.
made a, right, made the decision based on ordinance as it's written.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Which he
But doesn't that
It appears he has.
Shuts him down.
Well, in terms of this portion of it, but then again, then, then again, he's, currently has the appeal filed in terms of that interpretation with the Board of Zoning Appeals as to that frontage requirement and, and the language within the zoning ordinance and the facility standards manual.
We're being offered
But you feel like you had to come here to do this first before
Let me explain that.
Okay.
So at first, I thought it was going to the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right.
Right? So the town posed this question, well, um, is, is that the only thing you want to appeal it to? The Planning Commission is also involved. So basically, I was sort of led to believe that I had to appeal both. Because I, I, the reason why is because I even asked them, I said, because it's three hundred dollars for an appeal to the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals. So I said, well, if I appeal that, but then I have to appeal it to this commission and they deny it, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they're, they're going to also deny it. That's, that's going to be the, that, that is going to be the, because there, there's no other option. And, and Mr. Hopewell knows that. Which is why we, I had a lengthy discussion with, I believe, the office manager, I don't know who she was, but, um, about where to appeal it. So I, I think that, you know, which is why then I said, well, I, could I put off the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals to, not the, their next meeting, because that was right near this meeting, to July? Because if this failed, I, I don't want to pay three hundred dollars for nothing. So
Can you explain to us how Jim Covage got involved? I'm gonna see in your letter.
Yes. So he, uh, he's did the
But Jim Covage is a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, is he not?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just so we're all clear who Jim Covage is.
He's also a surveyor.
And he did the, he did that plat. He did that sketch.
Okay. And so what, yeah, so he
Because he's most familiar with the area, because he is also a neighbor.
Okay. All right, but he, but, so, so just walk us through the conversation with, with him.
So I said
And how he pointed you back to us.
Well, he didn't.
Right.
He didn't.
Well, he pointed you to, to, to fifteen-two twenty-two forty-four.
Well, I, I, well, you can say he pointed me or I pointed.
I'm just saying what you said in the letter.
I, I pointed
All right, so it wasn't your letter?
It's not my letter.
Yeah, not your letter.
It's Mr. Hopewell's letter.
Yeah, right.
I, I pointed him to that provision. I, I see these deeds
Okay.
quite frequently in my office. Um, I know that code section.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I, um, knew about it, so, but I knew he was best to know the area. In fact, he had all of this already. He had these plats. He had his plat. He had my parents' plat. He had all the plats. So I thought it was the easiest to allow him to, to design the plat. And we thought, we thought it would meet the requirements, but apparently it did not, which led me to the appeals after, and I say appeals as in the two appeals, after discussion with Mr. Hopewell's office.
And in terms of the need for the two appeals, essentially, there are the two different sections of code that come in, the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. One is appealable to this body, the other to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so.
So if the subdivision ordinance, if that is, if you agree with Mr. Hopewell's interpretation, I'm, I'm, it's sunk. I'm done. Other, otherwise, then I'd have to appeal it to probably a circuit court, but that would
All right, so
Any other questions?
No. Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make a motion if we're ready for it.
I believe they are.
All right. All right. So, um, I, I would like to move that, um, that, let's see, we're, I, I'll, I'll move that we deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's interpretation of the town subdivision ordinance.
For a second.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna, I, I move that we deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's interpretation of the town subdivision ordinance.
Others, we agree with, uh, what he wants to do.
It's not, let me just, my motion on the floor is I, I'm, that, I, I move that we deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's interpretation of the town subdivision ordinance. So if there's, I mean, for a second, we can talk about it.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so now we can talk about it.
Okay, that means that what we're saying is we agree with him.
What we're saying is that the zoning administrator interpreted the town subdivision ordinance exactly as it's written.
Gotcha.
Is it the town subdivision order, or is it this section about family subdivisions, really?
Uh, well, since the, well, the family subdivision, the twenty-two, that, that bigger
Forty-one.
Yeah, that's state code. So, um, that's not Andrew's purview at all. So, um, you know, right, I mean
You're right.
That, 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 that's not state code. That was the town ordinance. You are correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it is twenty-two. So I, I referenced the town ordinance as well, which is twenty-two dash forty-one, which references family subdivision. That is the town ordinance. But then it says it has to comply with chapter twenty-seven of the town code, the facility standards manual.
And the constraint in the facility standards manual that's not met is which?
That, ultimately, that, that interpretation is not the purview of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I know. I'm still curious. All right.
It, it's essentially the requirement for public street frontage.
Yeah, so, oh, right.
All right, sorry.
It seems like to, I mean, the language seems really straightforward and to deny it would be the Planning Commission equivalent of jury nullification. Anyway, sir.
Would be the what?
The Planning Commission equivalent of jury nullification in a criminal trial. I'm sorry, I don't mean to make, this is a serious issue and I'm sorry. Just a little tired. I don't mean to make light or be frivolous at all.
I know all about juries.
But you're saying basically, James, that it's pretty straightforward. That the state refers to the, delegates the authority to the town and the town's, uh, rules are unambiguous. I mean, it's pretty, just seems pretty straightforward, more or less.
My motion says that the zoning administrator may, I mean, basically, yeah, operated within the bounds of what is in the ordinance.
Yeah, right, right, right.
We have a motion and a second.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion fails. I'm sorry.
The motion passes, the appeal fails.
The appeal fails.
Mr. Chairman. We're moving on to the next item. Yeah, we're moving on to the next.
We're moving on to the next agenda item.
Your item. Is that a order?
Moving on to SS thirty-five eighty-five. Two thousand two-two sheets.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a site plan for consideration of approval by the Planning Commission. Uh, this is for a sheets, um, convenience store and service pumps, gasoline service islands located at the intersection of US Business fifteen-twenty-nine and Niles Mill Road. Um, as part of this, it's a little over six thousand square feet in terms of the convenience store itself, uh, five gasoline service islands. Uh, the site, it will have fifty parking spaces, uh, on site. They're proposing to install pedestrian accommodations along the frontage of Business fifteen-twenty-nine as, as well as Niles Mill Road. Um, there is also related to this development, although not as a part of it, an R-cut intersection at the intersection of Business fifteen-twenty-nine and Niles Mill Road. Um, this was proffered with the Williams Mill rezoning request that came in, in the county. Um, it is required for this development, so it must be installed prior to, uh, the issuance of an occupancy permit with this because for safety reasons, it would be necessary to be in place before this was construct, or before this was operational. So looking at this, and I apologize for the, the scale, it's, it's difficult. Um, we've got the components, as I said, it's at that intersection of Niles Mill and Business fifteen-twenty-nine. Um, there are, um, there's the R-cut shown on, on the bottom left-hand side and the site itself with the gas pumps in the front, uh, closest to Business fifteen-twenty-nine. The convenience store situated behind that. There are, um, and here's a little zoom in, so you can see, I, I apologize. I rotated this by ninety degrees just to make it a little bit more visible on the screen. So you can see parking along the periphery, um, as well as up against the, the convenience store itself, um, the gas pumps and the frontage. There are three entrances that are proposed to the site. Um, there's a full entrance and exit on US Business fifteen-twenty-nine. Uh, it has a, a mountable curb section in the middle, sort of pork chop, um, that, that it's necessary to be mountable for the larger fuel trucks to be able to, to access there or to, to exit there more appropriately. There's a right-in-only entrance on Niles Mill Road, closest to the, the intersection itself, and then a full entrance and exit on Niles Mill Road that aligns opposite the existing, um, entrance and exit to the shopping center across the street where the, the Coles and the Buffalo Wild Wings is located. Landscaping is proposed, um, essentially surrounding the site with some, uh, larger trees internal as well, where appropriate. And so ultimately, at this stage, we are looking for Planning Commission action. The plan does meet the town zoning and facility standards manual requirements. It has met DEQ's, uh, and received DEQ's approval for its stormwater management. And so it is able to be approved by the Planning Commission at this time. I'd be happy to take any questions the commission may have.
Two questions.
Mm-hmm.
One is, uh, are they having any electrical charging stations there?
They're non-proposed at this time, uh, which is not to say they, they wouldn't be precluded from coming back and, and proposing them in the future.
Okay. Uh, the other one is Niles Mill Road, uh, okay, you only can take a right after this. But also, um, are we going to close off the crossover to the south side of, of, um, the main road? Uh, Niles, Niles, Niles Mill Road goes straight across or right, or left, left, actually. Uh, what are we going to do? Are, are we going to redo that, uh, center divide and just make it Are we going to redo that center divide and just make it all grass so they can't go straight across?
No, it's proposed, you mean, where the entrance and exit sits opposite the entrance and exit to the adjoining shopping center?
Yeah.
That will remain open, essentially.
Then it's not an R anymore.
That's not where the R-cut is proposed. The R-cut is proposed at the intersection with Business 1529.
Yeah, but 1529, if you go straight across, you're going into the shopping center.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the Kohl's Buffalo Wild Wings Auto Zone Shopping Center. So yes, in terms of, at the terminus of Nals Mill Road where that intersects with 1529, you will no longer be able to go across there. You will have to make a right-hand turn.
Onto?
Onto Business 1529.
Okay, got, gotcha.
Correct.
So we got a little bit of work to do in the median. That's fine. Actually, that's the right thing to do.
Correct. And that site plan is being looked at right now. That is, as I said, is a separate project, but will be required, and it's a condition essentially of the ultimate occupancy of this.
You can't do the gas station until that stuff is done.
Yeah, they can't occupy the gas station. They can work on construction and everything else, but they cannot occupy the gas station until that is done.
That's fine. Okay. And then can I ask one other question? Is it VDOT's recommendation that, that you, that we keep it open so that they can go straight across into the Kohl's? I mean, is that, I mean, what, I mean, does VDOT want that versus like offset, I mean, they probably do, versus having to make a short right, then a short left, or something where it doesn't exactly line up?
Yeah, we certainly wanted to have them lined up, and we worked with the applicant initially, they had proposed offset intersections, which were much more dangerous and not supported by VDOT. So the relocation of that entrance required some significant additional grading on the site for them, but ultimately resulted in a far safer entrance to this facility than what was originally proposed.
Questions? So really, there's not much we can do to turn down sheets at this location. This is the most dangerous intersection in town, and the R-cut's an improvement, but you think of 1,000 houses going back on Nals Mill Road, plus the sheets there on the corner. It's just, you know.
It's right-turn lane only, you eliminate a lot of traffic.
You're not going to eliminate it, you've got to, how many cars?
Well, no, people are going to turn up closer to Kohl's and go down and come down Walmart, that Walmart.
Well, and.
You're just moving it out.
Through the shopping center.
Well, no, there's a road in front of the shopping center, it's a straight road, that sheets is going to line up with, actually. Isn't that right? There's a road between.
Correct, between the Auto Zone and the parking for the strip center.
There's a two-lane road there. Nobody uses it, but it's very well-designed, and it can be used.
Where this, where we stand in terms of the road improvements along the Business 1529 corridor, because that's one of the significant transportation corridors within the town, and has significant concerns in terms of congestion and impact on it. We recognized when the county did the rezoning, approved the rezoning for Williams Mill outside for the age-restricted development, and with anticipated additional future development in the county, that there were going, need to be, there was going to be a need for future improvements at that intersection of Nals Mill, which currently, as noted, is the most, I believe has the highest incident rate for accidents within the, this particular VDOT district. So the Nals Mill, the R-cut proffer was a, seen by the town as a temporary stopgap measure at that particular intersection to provide improvements. We have difficulty doing something larger at that particular intersection because of its proximity to the traffic signal at Old Brandy and Bell to the west, and the traffic signal at the entrance to the Walmart to the east. Where we're looking at the long-term solution is we've submitted an application, it's preliminary form, for a smart-scale funding, which is fully state-funded funds for a roundabout improvement at that Walmart intersection, which would work well in concert with the R-cut of essentially channeling the traffic to go right, to then go around the roundabout to be able to safely head back into town.
Is there any plans or thought about going down to Brandy Road? Right from the gas station. I know there's probably about two or three different properties or owners of that. Brandy Road comes up in the 15. It could go straight. If it goes straight, it would line up with that road that's by Auto Zone.
There's significant grade challenges that would come into play. When you look to the immediate west of this property, it drops off pretty significantly.
Yeah, I understand that. But all I'm getting at, though, is that could be a long-range plan, that that road goes straight in. Now, you have two areas that you can take off of Nals Mill Road, not just the Walmart area, but the other.
We could certainly look at it. It's not contemplated at this time.
Okay, gotcha. I understand. It's interesting. I would imagine it'd be difficult, because I think you've got two or three owners there that you have to deal with.
Is there a picture in your portfolio that more clearly illustrates the R-cut, the contemplated R-cut cut by itself? I just have a really hard time envisioning it.
So it's in the bottom-left corner there, so essentially, as you come up Nals Mill approaching 1529, you must, you can only make the right turn.
Uh-huh.
Similarly, is, if you're.
So you can't go west on 15, Business 1529, you can only go east? And if you had a roundabout up at the next intersection, which is Walmart, that would resolve, that would, then you could go, take that right turn and very quickly U-turn back.
Well, essentially, as part of the R-cut, they're also going to be extending that stacking lane for the left turn at the traffic light. The concern is that if we see.
Brandy Mine Traffic Light or the Walmart?
The Walmart traffic light. The concern is that as we see an increased volume in traffic, that stacking could exceed even beyond that stacking lane, and so then start to impede the flow on traffic. Whereas the roundabout is a more constant flow of traffic through there.
I see that. Thank you.
And one of the larger things that we're in conversation with the county about ultimately is looking to try and have an additional crossing of the railroad tracks that would tie in to alleviate some of the traffic on Nals Mill itself. But that's a much longer-term solution.
Not a, not just crossing.
Correct. Correct.
And Andrew, because this is a site plan, then the action that the Planning Commission would do is we would basically approve the site plan.
Correct.
And all outstanding technical requirements have been met?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
That we approve the site, the SS 3585-022-sheets site plan as presented.
Is there a second? Good, is there any discussion?
Should we include in there, provided all TRC comments are completed, are satisfied?
Well, it's presented that they're all, they've all been met. You know, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to other business.
None from the department this time, sir.
Follow-up items?
None from the department this time.
Planning Director updates?
The one update I have, I believe you've all had the chance to meet, Ms. Kelly Carmichael, she's our new planning and zoning assistant. So she picked a heck of a first planning.
That's right.
Yeah.
Baptism up fire.
Welcome.
Welcome. Okay, Commission Member's Discussion?
I have a question about, again, the Beard Appeal, and I know we've already voted on it, but I think it's, I just have a question for clarification. Is that allowed?
I don't think that's a good idea.
No, it's already been.
The question is not whether it's a good idea, it's whether it's permitted.
Oh. I guess it depends on what the question is. I mean, is this something you want to bring back to us at the work session next week? Or, you know, whatever.
It might be a better idea.
Yeah.
We have discretion to reconsider an action within a certain period of time, is that correct? Under Robert's Rules of Order?
Since we're members' discussion, I'm not opening that can of worms tonight. I mean, if you.
Well, that's fine. I'm saying, if the period to reconsider extends to the working meeting, then I would be happy to raise my question in the working meeting.
Very good question. You, as, as, I mean, you can maybe make a motion to reconsider, but you'd have to be a member, you'd have to be part of the, well, I guess we're unanimous, right? So, I mean, you'd have to be part of the side that was prevailing on the motion. And then, but, so I suppose you can do that, you can do that if you want to do that parliamentarily. Now, you'd be, you'd be dependent on somebody seconding your motion.
Yeah, I'm not, I just, I think it's a significant detail that I felt was not properly clarified, or anyway.
I mean, you can make a motion to reconsider.
Sorry?
You can make a motion to reconsider.
But can I do it at the working meeting if we clarify this point at that point?
I think if you're going to do it, you might as well do it now.
Can I request clarification before I make a motion to reconsider?
Clarification determined, I mean.
I don't know if the motion is appropriate. This is why I wanted to ask Commission Members' Discussion. I had a question about that action.
Sure, then, I mean, I'm, as part of Commission Members' Discussion, if it ultimately will lead to reconsidering the motion, then I'm sure you could probably bring it up. But it shouldn't relate specifically to any decisions that we made without being in the form of reconsidering the motion.
I'm a little lost. I'm going to ask my question, and I can be shut down if that's the will of the, okay. So I asked, what is the issue in the Facilities Manual, right? That is constraining the action here? And the response, if I understood correct, is that's beyond the purview of this body. Did I get that right?
That would be an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
But the language of the, here under 15-2224 is weirdly specific. It says.
We're getting into an area that we already discussed. If we want to discuss this, we should do it at a work session. It's talking about a motion we already decided on.
But that's why there's provision to reconsider.
If you want to make a motion, if you want to make a motion to reconsider.
What I want to ask is, it says, subject only to express requirement contained in the Code of Virginia to any, and to any requirement imposed by the local governing body, that all lots of less than five acres have reasonable right-of-way.
That question should have been done during discussion. I'm sorry, we've already decided this. That should have been asked during discussion before we voted on it. You don't do it after. Now, if you want to bring it up again, you can make a motion to do something different if you didn't like your vote.
I take it for granted that the capacity to reconsider, the ability to reconsider is, that provision is made in case an oversight is made or an omission is made in the deliberation. And that's my question. Was an oversight made here? I'm not completely sure.
So I guess our question for you, Ian, is are you making a motion to reconsider?
I don't know enough yet. That's, the clarification wouldn't let me know. Does anybody know, I mean, what are Robert's Rules of Order with respect to reconsideration?
You would make a motion to reconsider?
Within what time span? I mean, I've heard with respect to the town council, it was within one month or within, but that's a very casual, informal appreciation of the rules. I don't know. I mean, I can look it up, I guess.
I mean, this is, this is, anyway, this was a unique situation.
I believe things been unique.
What's that? See if we can figure it out.
We can talk about it at the work session.
Next week.
Robert's rule is you move this motion during the same meeting in which the original motion was made. So there you go, Ian, that's Andrew's question. You would do it, it's, you would have to do it during this original meeting.
I don't have enough sufficient basis to make the motion in this meeting if I can't get a clarification.
Any other discussion?
Can we elect a vice chair?
What?
Can we elect a vice chair?
This wasn't on the.
Megan was our vice chair.
Yeah. It wasn't on the agenda to do that today.
I asked the same question at our work session, and I was told wait until now, and I forgot to add it to the agenda. We wanted everybody here before we voted on it. We can do it at the work session, I don't care. But I think we should have a vice chair.
I agree.
Well, speaking of the work session, I'm not going to be here for the work session next week. I'm having surgery on Wednesday, so I doubt if I'm going to be here on Thursday. Sorry.
Need to be away for.
May I make a motion to, for a vice chair?
There you go.
Please? Jim Clements?
Second.
Clements, you accept the nomination of his vice chair?
Yes, I will do that.
We'll close the nominations.
Very good.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Clements.
That's more pressure on you to show up.
All right, so I believe we've exhausted every item on the agenda except for one.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.